Generally that we weren't thinking about cola increases. As in the past and maybe just. Setting a new salary for the next two years. And you know, I think that's probably a great place to start if if anyone. I mean, at least that was my takeaway from listening to everyone. Let's just set a salary, hold it steady for the next two years and then. A group will decide the salary in two years unless anyone disagrees with that or kind of that. That was my takeaway from the last meeting.
Yeah, where I'm my variation on that might be that set the salary for the first year. And then consider a call for year two. That that's maybe a distinction without a difference, but.
Right.
I think the the problem with one of the problems with setting with using a call in year one is that. Everything I look at suggests that we would be giving something richer than we're giving the other town employees. And so. Like your concept of stating a salary number and not expressing in the initial amount as a call. It does make sense, but. I'm just not sure about year two. I don't I don't care that much about. Year two, I just thought I'd mention that. That's why.
Yeah. Yeah. And the other takeaway, and I think maybe Chris was the one that. Or maybe we all agreed on it. I I can't remember, but. Generally speaking. You know, the concept of hey, we have to set a salary that attracts people. I I I don't necessarily fall in line with that because it's. It, you know, you could, you could, you could raise it thirty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars. That's not going to change the dynamics of attracting people to. Town service. It you're either in or out. Um, as you all know, because there's a lot of people working hard for no money. So it it is. Yeah. I I I mean, you know, the the chairman of the boards that we represent are are good examples of people that that work a lot and aren't being compensated. So or paid. So I just wanted to.
These are not skilled workers that need that have options, you know, that could be firemen or police or DPW people. Or of education, all kinds of people who have special skills. And that's one thing to say you need competitive salaries. These are political positions and as you say, Mark, they. They have their own reasons for wanting to be in those positions. So I I think if you put a a fair representative salary, taking consideration the cost of. Living since last time we said this and maybe. Be a little generous on the high side and since we're in an inflationary environment. And just set it for two years and we'll revisit this two years now. You know, worse comes to worse. There's a big pop in inflation next year. It's only one year. It'll suffer and they won't suffer that much.
Yeah, I I agree with you.
I'd just say, Mark, that as a concept, having salaries that would attract the best possible talent is a great concept. It's just that I think it's absolutely impossible to determine what that dollar amount is here because there's no fixed market. You know.
Yeah, it's not like if, you know, Jamie Stevenson is going to apply for Kevin's job. It's just not going to happen.
James, any any thoughts on your end?
No, I mean, I I'm in agreement. I I yeah, I don't think there's a need to really bifurcate the locality or the. Yeah, the locality or call adjustment and what's the total increase. I think we should start out with a, I guess we can start out with a. Were do we consider what they're being compensated right now fair? And and then we can make the adjustment from that, I guess. If everybody's in agreement that prior year salaries is a fair is a fair rate. Then we can adjust from there. I I don't know if anybody on the call has a disagreement or feels strongly that. Someone was overcompensated or undercompensated previously.
Uh, James, that's a great point, and I agree with you. I think that the one that stood out was. The treasurer position, whether or not, I mean, he made a compelling argument that. Relative to to those around him that he's. You know, below. A level commensurate with others around him. You know, looking at all the other data of the other positions, the town clerk and the and the first selectman. Really hard. I mean, it seems like we're in the ballpark. So I don't, to your point, James, I feel like. My 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 view on on those that I feel are already in the ballpark come up with, and I'm just going to throw out a number. You know, given inflation over the last year and 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 increases, perhaps just a 10% increase. Is a starting point for 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 the sake of a discussion, you know, just to raise the the salaries of the first selectman. And the the town clerk by 10%. And then, you know, maybe there was a a a discussion about the treasurer, whether or not that that number was too low. And as it relates to the board of selectmen. Um, you know, the number is eight thousand dollars. I mean. I I I don't know, you know, if you go to 10, does it matter? I mean, you could argue maybe go to 12 because that's a thousand dollars a month. I I don't know. I'm happy to hear. Uh, I I, you know, whatever builds consensus among the four of us, I'm happy to go along with.
Well, should we take them one at a time and test these statements and see if they actually work?
Sure. So maybe for the first selectman, I mean, he's at one hundred and fifty five or the position right now is at one hundred and fifty five thousand dollars if you just. You know, maybe differing from what you were saying earlier, Tom, is to to put a 10% increase and to set it for the next two years at that. 10% increase number. So, you know, one hundred and fifty five thousand times 1.1 gets you to that number and it stays put for the next two years.
One hundred and seventy.
Right.
To round it.
Around it. Just for the sake of a discussion, I I threw that out there. Happy to. Open that up for discussion.
I think we should just talk in each case, just at least a little bit about. What we know about comparability. And I think in the case of the first selectman. I I have to say it's not much. I mean, to 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 look at other towns, some of them have. You know, I chatted briefly with Tucker this morning and I I asked her, you know. If if we were to hire a town manager in addition to a first selectman. What about you? Now that's three people with administrative functions, you know, how how do you sort it all out? And she said. Every town does it differently. So I mean, it's almost it's almost an infinite number of permutations about what you could come up with. It's hard to. Define the magic. It's certainly true that once first selectman will. Uh, will take the job, take a different approach to a job than another. Um, it would all it would all change if we added a a town manager and we might want to rethink the the role of the first selectman, but. For what we know right now, which is very little about true comparability, um. You know, the 10% sounds fine to me.
I think you kind of have to look at, I I, Tom, I I think that I I agree with you. I just had another thought that. You could look at this as sort of a combination of the first selectman. And Tucker's office, which is now has, she's picked up from time we had it before. And look at that as your executive branch and say, well, in combination, how much is that? And compare that to a first selectman town manager combination in some other town. And I think the numbers become pretty comparable.
The total.
The total of the two, because you know, it's like that. It's a way of looking at it. Every every town is different. The way we do it is we have an executive of first selectman. And they have essentially an office manager. Which is now a town manager, but does an awful lot of the administrative legwork. So you have to see them as a as, you know, combination. It's not the 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 manager does not have executive powers, but. They certainly have a lot of administrative responsibilities and it makes the job of the first like mine as executive then possible. So it it I I found that those looking at it that way. I felt a little more comfortable with the numbers where they are.
And how do you feel about the 10% or rounded?
I think that's okay. I think that's a good number. It it's a little over what the inflation has been the last two years, but you know, we also want to make sure that. Um, going, you know, that we have a little bit of a hedge on when it's likely to be an inflationary year this year and. And if it tapers off in twenty four, it's well, fine, but it's still still going to be there. So. I'm okay with the I I would round it to one seventy just to make the numbers. So it's a little a tad under 10%. It's nine ninety or something like that, but I'm I'm fine with.
How about you, James?
Yeah, I mean, that sounds and that's kind of like I sent over kind of what the federal. What what raises are being standard based on the data that the government uses. Uh, and that's kind of in line. I mean, it would be a he'd get if it just based on the one fifty five, he'd get one sixty three. At the end of this year, and then you put another similar percentage and that puts you probably near one one seventy, maybe just north of that. So, yeah, and that's definitely in the ballpark.
Yeah, that's kind of why I went to that number, James, because when you just do a compound on the numbers you were giving. You're basically at a 10% hold it for two years and you're kind of there and and there's really. I I, you know, it's hard to argue against our recommendation if we if we if we go with that. So that was. That's where I came out.
And thank thanks. Thanks for that work, James. That's helpful.
Sure. No, just it's not supposed to be prescriptive, but it's more like what the government uses and and they use a lot of data, economic data. So just as a thumbnail.
I mean, do we? So does everyone feel comfortable with 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 a 10% increase that would put them at about? Or put the position at at a at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars? Are we? Okay.
The dollar would.
So would it be a would it be a 10% increase this upcoming year or a seventy five hundred dollar increase this year and a seventy five hundred dollar increase the second year?
No, I I think I think it would hold that one seventy for the next two years. So there would be. You wouldn't be getting any adjustments next, you know, the position would be, you know, you're running for that position come on this fall, James. You're you know, for the next two years while you're in office, your salary is one seventy.
Okay.
And the new salary goes into effect July one of this year, Tucker. Is that it?
Correct.
No.
No, I don't believe so. Um. This would be I think January, Ron, right? This, um.
The concept. The concept is you can't do pay changes during somebody's term of office. So we're doing it in anticipation of the next term of office.
So it's calendar year because we have the November election. Well, or is it upon upon the assumption of office of whoever his successor is?
Yeah, I'll have to confirm the actual start date on it, but there's transition time and that kind of thing. So let me confirm, but it would be whenever that whenever that position that term started. The the rate would be one seventy.
Okay, fine. Well, as long as we know that, then it's clear. So that's fine.
Right.
And and just for the I there was some, there was a mix up on my part. I asked Cheryl for registrar, but that was not a position we set for. So. It's obviously the town clerk and the treasurer, the other two. So and then the board of selectmen. Um, their eight thousand dollar salary, we would discuss. So I just, there was a sheet there where you saw the registrar dot two. That is not something we set. It's it's it's. Claudia's position as town clerk is.
Okay.
Which is obviously, you know, again, an elected position. So perhaps then with that. If we all agree, I I I'm happy to move in the spirit of keeping this moving this along to the to the town clerk position. Are we? And essentially, I'll just open up by applying the same 10%. To keep it clean and and. Uh, anyone have any comments on that?
What what's the current salary? One twenty?
Uh, one seventeen six four five. Is that right?
I think it's moved up since then, hasn't it? One twenty five eighty six. Tucker would know, right?
Five eighty six. Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's the one twenty. I'm just opening that up now.
Yeah, I have it right here.
Okay, so we would go to like.
One thirty two or so? Roughly, yeah, correct.
One thirty two, one thirty two, five, maybe. So it's not too far from that.
I mean, if we agree on the 10%, you know, and apply it accordingly, then, you know, we we.
Yeah, but I I don't like salaries that have these weird little numbers like forty four dollars and sixty cents. I mean, that's just like, come on.
Okay, so so we're going to round up to the nearest something. Uh, yes, I'm with.
Yeah, round it up to one thirty two, seven fifty, or even if you're really generous, one thirty three, you know.
Okay, okay. So I'm just gonna.
And given how much work that the town clerk does, I would go with the one thirty three because that is a tough job.
Okay, so we're at one thirty three. Um, for the town clerk, which which is a ballpark 10% increase. Anyone? Any other comments? James, Tom?
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds reasonable.
Okay, I'm just making a mental one. So it was one thirty three. Are we Tucker? Are we good on that? The current salary just?
Yeah.
And then 10% gets us pretty close to one thirty three. Okay. Um, all right, moving on, uh, to the uh, the town treasurer. Um, currently at twenty five thousand dollars. And you have the historical data in front of you. Uh, and obviously Andrew also made a. A comment about or was on the last call. Um, so maybe this. You know, I I. I I I welcome any comments from from you all because I.
Well, on this chart, it's twenty five. Is he going to twenty six two oh one for this year?
Yeah, that's what I see also. Twenty six two oh one.
Twenty six two oh one. Yeah. Okay, yes. I'm just pulling up the I'm I'm pulling up the historical data here. Yeah, looks like twenty six two oh one. You're right. Now. Is there any thoughts on? Uh, you know, any thoughts on on? James's point earlier, are are we comfortable with that twenty six as being a fair number right now? Or is that is that not a? Is that not a number that? That is on par with our our peers?
I I mean, you know, objectively, it doesn't seem to be on par just on a numbers apples to apples kind of basis. But if it is it apples to apples? I mean, this treasure position is supposed to be a part time position. Are those other treasurers doing a lot more? If they're not, then yes, we are grossly underpaying our treasurer.
That's the problem. I think that's. Problem is that for many of those. So called treasurers, I I think they have, some of them are CFOs. I mean, so you get this incredible range on that. Of all the columns, I think that was the one the most dramatic range and and to and to to say that we have comparable numbers for. Other towns where the job responsibilities are the same. I I don't I don't have a reason to believe that we we know. So I'm a little more comfortable saying that we went through this process two years ago and. We thought we came up with a fair number and let's just trust that we did. Um, but I I'm open for arguments, but I I think comparability is our least reliable factor.
Good point. I I don't know what number would satisfy. You know.
Well, that's it.
What what number does he want?
What is it? What would be the number?
Does he want fifty thousand a year or a hundred thousand? What does he want? You know, if it if it's full time. Then it's full time. But, you know, it shouldn't be. We shouldn't pay him more than, say, the the assistant to the CFO of the town. And I don't know what that salary is, but I that's so philosophically, we need to decide, are we still looking at this as a part time position? Oh, absolutely. Then then it's then we're paying them a stipend.
I don't think there's any question, but that it's a part time position, right? He had, he has a full time job plus this.
Yeah.
What?
One of the arguments that was made, excuse me, Mark, is that. The financial results of Andrew's trading are positive and I, that doesn't tell me anything. I'm sorry, I just. What would we do?
Well, when interest rates go back down, they'll be negative. So, you know.
And he and there were comments about. How often trades have to be made and yet the investment philosophy here is that. All these instruments are held to maturity. So I'm not sure the timing of trades is exactly a. An art here.
You're at the mercy of the maturity of the bonds that you hold and the interest rate at the time of reissuance. So. Yeah, I I I understand. I I. Yeah, I. So this one is I. I I I don't know how to get to a a happy medium here. So. Do you raise it to thirty thousand dollars and? I don't know.
Under what? Under what argument?
Well, which is roughly 10%, you know, gets you.
Don't get me wrong. I I'm for the 10%.
Right. Um, and in the spirit of rounding up, you could be at thirty thousand dollars. I I I don't. I I I don't have strong, strong feelings here.
Yeah, it's just difficult to compare, right? When you don't know the role. I mean, the other numbers of the other treasurers are like eighty thousand. I mean, they're like multiples of this, but then again, their their roles might be very, very different. So I mean, it comes back to the question of 10% we can decide on, but the question is really. Was it base? Was it a good baseline to begin with?
Right, right. And I think the argument he made to be completely. Uh, fair here is that the job requires him to be working during his work hours because of markets being open. Obviously, you know, I'll just use myself as an example or the all of us, we. You know, the position requires us mostly to be present after hours. But again, it is still town service. So that part I struggled with in in when he was talking last time that, you know, it does require him to give up some of his time at work. I. Again, that doesn't really get me anywhere.
Yeah, but but as you indicated, you know, he his job is treasurer and to manage these accounts is not to not to be intraday trading, right? That's not. Right. Job. So if he's doing that, maybe, yeah, he might have to call, you know, reach out to some banks, switch accounts and find out the best rate, but it's not like an in necessarily an intraday thing. So shouldn't take much of his time during working hours, hopefully.
And that same theory would apply to the selectmen. They're required to be here during daytime meetings, the board of.
Yeah, yeah. So is it 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 would a thirty thousand dollar salary be? Would you all agree on on that, which is essentially a 10% increase and rounding it to a a nice number? I'm sorry, Chris didn't hear you.
It starts getting high, but if we freeze it for two years and say that's.
This zoom keeps freezing. Is that me or is that just Tim?
No, that's I think that's Chris.
Okay.
I think my I think my platform is unstable today for some reason.
Right.
I was saying, if we move it to thirty thousand, it seems a bit high, but. I froze again.
No, you're good.
Oh, my God. Okay. So it seems a bit high, but I guess if we just say, okay, that's it for two years, then. Maybe that's okay.
Well, I mean, it's not much more than the 10%, right?
Yeah, yeah, it isn't. It's it's a it's a thousand dollars more than 10%.
Yeah, so. And and he's is he the only one who really kind of, I I don't want to say push, but advocated for an increase?
Yes. Well.
Personally, he's the only.
Personally, he's the only one that personally.
Yeah. So I I mean, I wonder if he's going to be relatively kind of disappointed. In that, hey, a 10% great, I got eleven.
Well, he can decline the run for reelection.
Yeah.
So it's.
If it's such a burden, you know.
So shall we say thirty thousand dollars and 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 all agree on that number? Does that sound good? James?
Yeah.
Chris? Okay. And then, you know, the salary for the board of selectmen, the the. Two positions. I.
I'd take him up to ten.
Well, before we go there, do we have? Any comparability data whatsoever? On these roles? Yeah.
On the selectman, uh, I. I don't have that information. I just have the the on the positions that we've already gone through.
Looking through some of the memos that Tucker pulled together, one of them.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't see anything there.
There really isn't any.
Are they are they are they unpaid in other towns, Tucker?
You got me on that one. I'm not sure.
One of the one, one of the things that somebody did in one of those analyses was to say that. Uh, elected legislators. Pay levels are X and and they were using that to to argue for. Or at least it was raised in the context of a discussion about the board of selectmen and I go, wait a minute. Like, if you're going to pay your legislature, I'll be in line for that, you know. But I I don't. So I I mentioned that because I don't think that. And I think that's Tucker's sense also. We we don't really know what this would be paid for in another town. So. I don't know. It's 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 a little harder. It's a little harder, but I mean, if you want to default to the 10%, it's okay with me, but this is the one area where I could live with not doing a raise at all.
Yeah, I mean, it's an honorarium kind of, right?
Right. And I do know that the two. Or have known, certainly it's true of Kathleen Corbin and probably true of Nick as well is that. They could care less about whether that honorarium goes up a little bump. So, you know, why do it?
Uh, are you then suggesting we hold it flat? Is that your recommendation?
I guess.
Okay, James, Chris?
Yeah. Go ahead, Chris.
No, no, go ahead. You start it first.
Yeah, I I, you know, I have a ten, you know, I I'm kind of in favor of giving everybody generally a a a 10% increase for cost of living, but in this case, I I think. It's a very valid point that this is more kind of an honorary. No one's really using this money. Or theoretically needs this money to as their income necessarily. It's it's more, and I don't even know what is this? And considered a salary or a stipend? How is it defined?
No, it's a salary and they they've held at the eight thousand twenty one now for for many years. And and actually, I think there was a period of time where somebody. I can't remember which one. Does somebody actually gave it back or said they didn't even want to take it? So. I think that feeds into your thinking about it being more of just a they're, you know, doing service for the town.
Yeah. So, yeah, in that sense, I I'm I'm okay keeping it flat or raising it slightly, but.
Yeah, maybe go to nine thousand.
You like those round numbers, Chris?
I like round numbers.
Well, that would that would play into your 10,000. I mean, if it's your 10%.
Yeah, you know, James, James, James kind of mentioned it and. Although he could go either way, if I heard him correctly, nine thousand, I mean, I'm I'm fine with nine thousand. It's 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 a token for a token position. I I don't think we need to. I personally would. I don't think we need to spend.
This raises it. This raise in in connection with the town budget is infinitesimal.
I mean, I got maybe in in summary here, if if we all agree on that, I mean. I mean, I mean, in the spirit of. These positions, as you, you know, I think. On a go forward basis, people really should be looking at. You know, adjustments based on on cost of living increases, right? Or or not not as applying a cola, but saying, hey, these these. We're not trying to create a salary that attracts people to move this town and all of a sudden be like, I gotta run for first selectmen. It's it that's. So I I, you know, I don't want to get, I I I hope the 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 groups that that follow us in doing this process aren't just. Uh, you know, saying, hey, we just got to keep raising, you know, if if it. If it feels like this, the salary doesn't need to go up the next time in two years, then that should be a discussion. To I think, given what we've gone through the last two years. I do think a 10% increase based on cost of living and held for the next two years is very appropriate. If you if we had done this four years ago, I don't think I'd be agreeing to this, but that's just my my viewpoint and I wanted to state it.
Well, one argument that supports that is that. Even if it feels silly that people are going to rely on this. For their daily expenses or annual expenses, but we do have the additional fact that it's been. It hasn't been rising very much historically. So if it were valid 10 years ago. Anywhere close, then yes, of course, we'd want to do some kind of an adjustment now because it hasn't. Over that tenure period, I don't think it's kept anywhere near tracked inflation. Is that is that your impression, Tucker? Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's what mine now. Did the last like, it it's at least for the last five or six years, it definitely has not tracked what what normal, not normal, but.
Correct.
Increases should would prognostic.
So the best way to think about is 10 years ago, the salary for the first selectman was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Our increase now. Our increase now to a, for the next two years, which would put us into twenty twenty-four. Uh, excuse me, twenty twenty-five would be. A um, excuse me, a forty-five thousand dollar increase uh, over that timeframe of ten plus years, which. I guess if you did the math, comes out to probably. You know, and.
How much was it ten years ago?
One twenty-five, thirty, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, so you basically put a four percent increase. I I imagine you're gonna get to that one seventy number over ten years, um, I don't. Um, is the way I would think about it.
So to to summarize, just that I can understand, because we're gonna have to take this into account when it comes to the budget planning and all.
It's uh, it's just a tad over three percent.
Right, and which I think is very, very fair, uh, very fair, I think, and and that's what. You know, I just did the math myself, yeah, Chris, we're right at, yeah, three point something, so.
Yeah, three eighteen, yeah, is what I got.
So, um, you know, I think to James's um, data, you know, that is. Uh, commensurate with what you've probably seen from federal. From the federal uh, or for government positions over that tenure period.
The the one, uh, I have one last comment, in all the other positions, we kind of went over ten percent. In the case of the selectmen, we rounded down, I would recommend that we round up and make the salary one seventy-one.
Okay, Chris, uh, I will support that.
So that way everybody can say, well, you know, it's ten percent kind of rounded up.
Okay, and since you are the rounding, the the rounding person of the committee, uh, I I deferred to you and I I I. I I'm fine with that, so I just, I wrote that down. So, just to summarize, uh, I have a hundred and seventy-one. Salary for the next two years for the first selectman. I have a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the town clerk for the next two years. Um, I have thirty thousand dollars for the treasurer for the next two years, and and a. I'm not gonna call it a salary, but a stipend for the, for the board of selectmen of nine thousand dollars.
And no COLAs.
And no COLAs.
Exactly, good.
We are, yeah, yeah.
I got it. I just want to make that clear, because that's where we've gotten in trouble in the past. We did stipulate that, so.
Yeah, and I think this is cleaner.
It is, it's fair.
And I think, I mean, we're all in, we're all in agreement here, um. And this, then the next step for the, for for James and Chris, I mean, this just goes right to the board of, of the town council, this does, obviously. Uh, is not, Tucker, correct me if I'm wrong, this is in the budget, but not something you guys will ultimately approve in your. In it.
Right, so that the the town council sets it, so that would be, yes.
So, Tom and I just have to bring this.
Yeah, you guys, yeah, I mean, we we have to kind of go, but you tell us it is.
Right.
Yes, and, but, yeah, and I I I, in the past. Or at least in my years uh, on the town council, and and Tom has more experience than me, but it it. It it was not as transparent, and it was very rushed at the end of the process, and in fact. On the date of of the last, the last time we did this, we actually couldn't even vote on it, we had to. Push it off, because there was a lot of debate, and I, I think the way we've done it here with the board of, with the two of you and the two of us. Uh, I think, I mean, it's it's hard for, for, well, Tom, you know the town council. I hope.
To put it in a positive, a more positive way. I think, I think that debate. For me, made the these new base, the, you know, our baseline that we began today with is credible, we've, we've gone through this process thoroughly. Couple of years ago, so there was a benefit to that debate.
Yes. Yep.
And I will obviously put this into the notes, that this was a, this was a, the process worked, and having the the two subcommittees, you know, work together, makes sense.
I mean, Tucker, wasn't this one of the best subcommittee meetings you've ever been a part of?
I'm telling you, they could only all be like this.
So I have a process question. Uh, my memory doesn't always work as I would like it to, did, did I or someone else agree to take notes from the prior meeting, or?
I was just gonna ask that, did anybody file anything? I was gonna look that up next week.
That might have been me, so, and I, I'm late, but I can, I can still do it if you want.
That would be great, something has to get filed, and it can be very, you know, as, as you know, this discussion very, very long.
Recorded, um.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, nowadays, our notes just have to cover who was in attendance and the topics that we discussed, we don't. It was the, I would just note, Tom, that Penny and Christina were there.
And Andrew.
And and Andrew spoke, this, you know, if you want me to do the notes for this, Tom, I'll do it, because.
Okay.
Um, I I have.
I'll do the, I'll do the last meeting, because I I have enough.
Okay, and 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 this is simple, because uh, the notes will reflect the the four numbers that I just summarized. Uh, one seventy-one, one thirty-three, thirty thousand, and nine thousand, the five of us in attendance, and we all agreed. Unanimously on these numbers.
Correct, good.
And with that, I think everyone should get back to whatever they're doing prior, and. I would just, I would just say thank you, and this is by far the um, the best um. Uh, subcommittee meeting I've ever been a part of, or or the process, so, I just want to thank everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Good weekend, everybody.
Have a good weekend.
Be well.
Bye.